This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good. Okay, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Okay, we're gonna open up public speak. There's gonna be twenty minutes of public speak. I will not be running it. Um, Andy will be allowing people in, in the order that they raise their hand and signal that they'd like to talk. And I want to remind everybody that you'll have three minutes to be able to speak. So we're opening up public speak right now. Thank you.
All right, just to be fair, I'm gonna lower everyone's hands so we can start over. So if you'd like to begin speaking, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, we have Linda Broadhurst.
Okay. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Join as a panelist, right? Okay. Okay. I don't see me, but that's okay.
We can hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, Linda Broadhurst, I live on Lawler Drive. My first concern or question would be actually on the public speak time, who decides the amount? Because our last meeting, we had ninety minutes, an hour and a half, and now it was cut down to twenty minutes. Which, I mean, this is a hot topic, and it just seems like you don't want to hear from the public because you're only given twenty minutes. And when we had ninety minutes, four people didn't even get to speak. And it's very unfortunate if someone's not gonna be able to let you know how they feel. And the second thing I'd like to bring up is, in reference to Dr. Perone's offer being rescinded. We really deserve the truth, what actually happened. And the reason I'm saying this is because on April twentieth, on the news, Mayor LaChapelle was on. And discussing him, she said, and I quote, "It's unfortunate at the end of negotiations and going back and forth with different offers, we could not come to an agreement." Okay, so it says that you guys negotiated with him. Two days later, we had Lori Garcia on the news, and she said, "We never entered into any negotiations." I know it's been alluded to that we have, but the only time we ever spoke with him about any of the points of the contract was on a phone call, which occurred after midnight. And then we received the email from him, and unfortunately, we never gave him a chance to explain any of his requests. And then we have the Daily Hampshire Gazette today with Shannon, Shannon Dunham. And she said, "Stated negotiations with Dr. Perone were never discussed during the committee's executive session." So somebody isn't telling the truth, and I hope they'll be held accountable for their words. And I hope, you know, we can get the transparency and get the answers that we need. Because, you know, we are the community, we do deserve the answers, and that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you. Done.
Thank you, Linda. All right, Marissa Carrer, you're the next panelist.
Hi, um, thank you for taking the time. My name is Marissa Carrer, and I'm a former East Hampton School Committee member. I have two kids in the district. And I just wanted to express my respect and gratitude for our high school students, for their leadership. Our EHS students have a long history of guiding our community, and they continue to stand up for each other and for civil rights. I'm also here to ask for committee leadership. It's been two weeks since Dr. Faginsky's stark social media posts were first brought to light, and we haven't yet heard from the committee about how her statements against Title IX protections for trans kids might have affected their support for her candidacy. In the meantime, our own high school GSA students have been subject to the inflamed attention of online commentators and media outlets who've been tracking this story. I've been following the news, and it's been disturbing to watch national media deride students. And these are high school kids. When they raised a really reasonable question that any hiring manager should ask, what kind of professional judgment does a public school administrator display when she posts fully discoverable and divisive commentary about protected student populations and about civil rights laws that she would actually oversee as a superintendent? So, you know, I think these criticisms in this feverish media environment are cheap, non-founded. And I hope that the committee will take the opportunity tonight to join our GSA students in representing our district's commitment to trans kids. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marissa. All right, Patty Cavalli, you're next. Patty, you're muted.
I apologize, now I'm not.
There you go.
I would, I would ask first and foremost that this school committee, please give us the respect that we are giving them. I'm watching pictures of some of you, and you're not even paying attention to us. Not all of you, but some of you. And I do have to call you mayor especially. I would appreciate if you would stop whatever you're doing and listen to your community that pays your salary. I am appalled at what I have heard from this committee and what I've heard in the media. I was taught as a child, if you don't lie, you don't have to remember what you say. As Linda Hutter said, your stories are starting to contradict each other. So why don't you come forward and start telling this community the truth? You have an awesome candidate. Dr. Perone outshines them all, but you cannot admit that you were wrong. You cannot face the fact that you've told whatever stories you've created, because that's what they are. Let's call a fact a fact. And you cannot stand up and do what's right for this community. So I please implore you tonight, as I did at the last meeting, to be adults and admit you are wrong and start to heal this community now, please. I've been a resident for more than years, and I've raised four kids and now have ten grandchildren. And you owe my children and my grandchildren that, and all of the other children of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Oh, our last attendee that wanted to speak is no longer there. Patty's our last one. Oh, we have one. Kathy, I'm putting you to panelists. You're currently muted, Kathy.
Here we go. Good evening. My name is Kathy. I wanted to once again request that these meetings be moved to at least hybrid so that the community at large can participate. There are many seniors in our community that would like to participate, and they cannot engage on the Zoom. Secondly, I, I think that we've now lost two potentially good candidates because of politics and some unfortunate circumstances that appear to have not been handled well and by poor leadership among the school committee, it appears. And I think that we should consider looking at Dr. Perone again and move forward with offering him the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, Julie, you are next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Hi, my name is Julie. I live in Precinct One. And I just wanted to go back to the last meeting for a second. It seemed like before you took a vote to re-add Mr. Perone to the superintendent list, one of the counselors, Counselor Goldstein, I believe, he made some pretty negative comments regards to Mr. Perone for going to the media. And I can't help think that he chose not to re-offer the position to Mr. Perone due to his own bias, because he was angry that he went to the media. That's wrong. This chaos was not the fault of Mr. Perone. This belongs to the school committee. The, you guys are the ones who caused this through lack of transparency, lack of integrity, and you didn't put the students first. And I hope that as you move forward, that we can trust that you will do right by the students and not by your personal biases. It has no business in the school committee to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We currently don't have any hands up. Anyone else wishes to speak, they may.
We have a few more minutes, so if anybody, this is the time.
Not seeing any hands, or we can wait if we need to.
Let me give it one more minute, and if nobody else signals that they want to talk, we will close public speak. So we'll go to six eighteen. This is the time to speak if you want to. Okay, it's been a minute, and I haven't seen anybody.
We have one.
Okay.
Steve Tataro, you are becoming a panelist.
Yeah, I just want to throw it out there that, at this point, as a parent with three children in the school system, that I'm here actually for, just to see what's going on, just for honestly the amusement aspect, because I've already begun the process of pulling my children out of the school. So, at this point, unfortunately to say, just here for the ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We have more hands coming up here.
Okay.
Noreen, you're becoming a panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Noreen Nardi, and I live over in the Plain Saxon. I first of all want to thank all of the school committee members for your hard work. I know this has been difficult for everybody. I especially want to thank Shannon Dunham for her time she's put on the school committee. I know she's conquered a lot of things personally, and I am sad to believe him, but I understand the reasons. I want to thank Garcia for having the voice that I think tried to get out to the basement and that, you know, that wasn't coming out of the lack of transparency. I do hope that going forward, the school committee can't put aside their, their personal biases. I was somewhat disappointed last week, or last meeting rather, when Shannon wanted to speak. And, you know, before she read her statement, that I wrote out a statement, and she was discouraged from reading it. And I think that that little intimidating for her because of her, you know, medical issues. And I really wish she had been allowed to at least start and to speak her mind. And then if she got into some uncharted territory that she couldn't discuss, then by all means, say, oh, that's something we couldn't discuss. But I do think she was, you know, really intimidated into not saying her piece last school board meeting, and I was disappointed in that. So thank you, and I hope going forward, you make the right decision for the community and listen to what the community members are really asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Tara Robinson, you're next.
Excuse me one second. A lot of people are writing in the questions that they can't see a gallery view, they can only see the clock. I don't know if it's how we have it set up, but people are concerned that they can't at least see the school committee. Sorry to interrupt.
You're okay.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for this time, and thank you to the school committee for all of your hard work. I know it's been a really rough month especially, but I just wanted to join in and at least verbalize as a parent of kiddos in the school district. I'm not interested in Dr. Perone being re-offered this position. I very much agreed with the feedback that Maren and the other school committee members had about the lack of being a leader in how he managed the media and everything, and the impact of all of this on the community. I don't know if there was a good way for him to try to seek some kind of support, but the way he stepped back after it all went really awry was really frustrating. I'm hopeful that the process can restart with new candidates possibly. And I'm very thankful to the high school students who found the posts from Dr. Faginsky's stark. And I'm hopeful that all of that will be part of the learning experience, and we can use consultants to help navigate this moving forward to be a successful process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Patty, you are next.
I believe, is this the Patty that spoke previously?
I don't believe so.
I, I just want to clarify something, because I keep hearing that Dr. Perone has gone to the media. I want to clarify that it's not so much Dr. Perone that went to the media, but more so the community members went to. I being one of them, I reached out to every media that I could when I heard the initial. So let's not blame Dr. Perone for what a lot of us community members did. We reached out to the community. We, excuse me, to the media and to the community. We thought it was unfair, and we thought that everyone needed to know. So let's get that fact straight. We, as the community, reached out to the media. He reached out, and I heard about it through a friend of his that lives in this community, and I reached out to the media. Thank you.
I'm sorry, in fairness, I'd like to, we're not supposed to be having folks respeak. I appreciate all the comments I've been hearing so far. I just want to make sure that we're following all of our procedures properly.
Apologize for that. Thank you, Patty. I believe that is all the speakers for now.
Okay. And that should be twenty minutes, so we should be okay. I'll give it like thirty seconds more in case somebody wants to say something. We're gonna close public speak in a minute, so... If not, because I know we started a few minutes late, trying to make sure we had everybody. When it hits seven, six twenty-six, I'm going to close public speak, so if you want to speak now, I would do so. All right. I'll give it thirty more seconds, and we'll be done.
I think a hand was raised. Oh, maybe it's gone down. I saw Liz Perry's hand go up.
Okay. I'm seeing six twenty-six. We're gonna close public speak. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass you on host, okay?
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, so I want to make a couple of quick announcements, clean up a few items and misconceptions. One, just as usual, we don't respond to public speak, but what you'll notice is that people are often making notes of what people say. I keep avid notes on, on what people say, and I'm sure most of our school committee members do. So that's why you'll sometimes see our heads down. That happens even in an in-person meeting. I'd also like to remind everybody that it's very unusual to have a very long public speak. Our usual limit is fifteen minutes, and tonight we held it to twenty. And that was sufficient for the public so far. All right, another reminder, we did talk about this, but I think in all of the conversations we have, it got missed. We did state that in the fall, starting with the next year, we would be doing hybrid. That takes some training to do that effectively, but we will be doing hybrid versions of our school committee meetings starting next fall. And I have already talked to President Gomez about doing training for Megan and I so that we can run those hybrid meetings successfully. It's a little bit more complicated than a Zoom meeting, so we will be gearing that up this summer, and we'll be ready in the fall. So that answers that piece. The reason why we're doing hybrid is because so many people find that they can tune in from home. That feels better. Some people still prefer to be in person, so we're going to do that. Before I tell you the last two items, let me tell you that we're going to go into executive session. I'm gonna read it to you, and then just basically tell you what we're going to be doing. At the end of this meeting, we will be adjourning from executive session, so we will move to go into that to pursuant to MGL thirty A twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares and pursuant to MGL thirty A twenty-one A seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law approval of executive session minutes for the session. We're gonna be working on March twenty-third, March twenty-eighth, and March thirtieth. So, last two things I want to remind the public. Yes, we have been quiet, most of us. Executive sessions are not supposed to be discussed until you have released the executive session minutes. That's why you will find most of us extremely quiet about this. And the only time we have made any statements is when we are talking about something that happened already and was shared by Dr. Perone. So, I know it's frustrating, but there's many times that we can't talk, and that is why we've been quiet. We are doing everything according to the advice and guidance of legal counsel. So, we are doing the best, and as we go into executive session, at the end of this meeting, we will be looking at those minutes. And our hope is that we will be approving those minutes tonight. So, now we have to talk about our superintendent and search discussion. And it says a potential vote on the candidate to be the next superintendent. That's written that way just so that we have some leeway as to what we talk about. We really need to decide next steps. So, we have two basic steps that I see going forward, and that is that we open up negotiations with Dr. Bruno, which is a possibility. And the other is that we hire an interim. Okay, each one of them has positives and concerns. So I want to open up the discussion, but let me just begin with a couple of things. None of the finalists had been a superintendent for a year. So we, it was our intention to offer all three finalists, whoever got the position, a mentorship for, for superintendencies. So basically, they're all on a pretty close level field, because nobody has been a full-time superintendent for any time. Dr. Perone was an interim, but that is not exactly a superintendency. So all of them would have had their three-year mentorship, and I want to make sure they know that. When we talk about possibility of opening up to Dr. Bruno, what I would like to say personally is that I think that opening up to Dr. Bruno would be a way of actually healing the community. Because I think, number one, that his personality and his commitment to communication and involvement with the people that he works with would do a lot for reaching out and balancing people. The other thing about having the superintendent be Dr. Bruno instead of an interim is that we have some consistency. We would have a contract that has a big review for the first year. So there would be, there would be a chance to really talk about and see the kind of work that's done. That would be for any of these people, because their first year is going to be the most crucial. So I think that in terms of balancing the community, going to Dr. Bruno has some big positives. He, he's still interested. He, um, he's still interested. He emails me and I immediately emailed that, um, to everybody on the committee. So that you could see his intention to stay in. And I think that says a lot about his commitment to the position, but also his ability and belief that he can handle what has been a very tough situation. The other idea is that we, um, hire an interim and that would buy us a year. Um, that would buy us, uh, we would go through, um, MASC and have an interim for one year and that would hopefully quiet things down some, but we would have to do a superintendent search come midwinter and start this process all over again. So that has its, um, pros and cons, but those are, um, I'm just tossing ideas out. We need to really figure out tonight what we want to do, where we want to go. So I'm opening up the discussion to everybody. Lori?
Thank you, Chair. I would first like to respond to your comment because I feel that it was directed partly towards me. Because I did offer comments only after our mayor spoke on the Bill Newman Show and to Western Mass News with statements that I did not believe to be true. So that is the only time that I responded to her statements and I responded to anyone who asked me after that everything that Dr. Vito Perron has commented to the press has been 100% accurate. We never had back and forth negotiations. And he was dismissed because he was told of his microaggression. So I am stating that for the record. And I would like to say that to heal our community, the best possible solution as requested by the majority of our teachers, the teachers' union, and our students, as well as people who are our constituents, the majority by far would like us to enter into negotiations with Dr. Vito Perron. And if he would agree to do so, that would just once again illustrate his growth mindset that he has always demonstrated, unlike members of this committee. Anybody else?
Chair? Uh, so of the two options, I, you know, the comments, the way you framed them as far as, uh, Dr. Bruno and, and opening negotiations there versus, um, an interim, definitely have split mind on this, but hearing, um, the, you know, vocal public requests and voicemails and emails. Um, I think that our obligation as a school committee is to produce a process, which we didn't. And there are a ton of people who don't like that result on all sides of this issue, whether they felt comfortable talking publicly or, or not. Um, and because of that, and actually my colleague, uh, Ben, um, also said there seems to be, you know, a, as far as the process and, um, pulling together focus groups and, um, flowing, I, I like the idea of an interim. Um, and having the summer to collect opinion, uh, to build, uh, trust. Um, so we can focus on that over the summer into the fall. Uh, and have somebody who has experience just guiding the boat operationally, um. I have a lot of confidence in our admin team in the buildings. I think that's a real, um, tip of the hat to you, uh, Dr. Leclerc for that. You've built a really great leadership team and I have a lot of, um, faith in them. I would ask with a search, I totally agree that, uh, we should bring on a search like consultant. I, I would prefer or ask if it isn't in, we go over the interim route and we have, um, uh, the time. I'd, I'd like to see what other consultants, search firms are out there other than MASC, um, that have, um, a broader catchment area where, where they recruit differently than, um, MASC and I know shade, but our last experience with them was, was very much within, um, the circle of existing superintendent candidates and, uh, I would just like to see a, a search conducted by someone who, or a firm, that has a more broad reach and, and where they recruit from or post it. So I, I don't have a name of that, but the interim would give us some time to, to explore that, um, that option. So, thank you.
You would want that interim to start July 1st, so we don't have a lot of time. You would want them-
For the, the interim and then-
Okay.
That buys us the year.
Got it.
We can take a look at process for the next search. But I, I'm asking that, you know, it not necessarily be MASC, um, that does that search.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. All right. Ben, Maren, anybody?
Yeah, ma'am, Chair. Um, I, I also want to re- reiterate, um, that we've had a very extensive process that has been in place. Um, it is a process that has been used many times before, uh, and had ended up with very good results. We had an excellent, very broad 13, 14-member search committee that brought us forward, went through all of the candidates that submitted, um, and brought the three top finalists to us. Um, we then had our own internal school committee process where we vetted each of those candidates, visiting their sites, talking to people that work with them at their sites. Um, had them come into in-person meetings throughout our district for a day and then ended with an interview. So again, from a process perspective, that process was very thorough and very strong. The, the steps that came out of that and the decisions that we made as a committee have had some errors and have had some mistakes and missteps. I certainly think that that's the case from my perspective. Um, I don't think there was any gross negligence. There's no conspiracy. And I think anyone who's trying to make it into a conspiracy of any which direction is not understanding our process and understanding that the votes that each of us made was ours to give. That's why we're an elected official. That's why we're here. We take into consideration all of the community members, teacher union, individual teachers, administrators, parents, students. Everybody can give their opinion, can put forward their ideas. And it is ultimately very sad where parts of this community have gone and how much they have attacked us as school committee members. Now attacking our students for raising questions around the transmedia, the transgendered posts by certain candidates. It's very unfortunate that our community is choosing to use social media in the most ugly ways possible, and not everybody, but clearly some people have. And I think it's also really important that everybody understands when you're in a traffic accident, everybody involved, bystanders, people in the accidents, everybody has their own perspective. So anybody who's trying to state that theirs is the one truth or the one fact that is most important is misunderstanding the reality that each of us have our own perspectives that whether it's leading up to our vote, whether it's what people said, each of us are going to have different perspectives. And again, I'll actually, again, very much confirm and agree with the mayor is that everybody has their opinion. Everybody can state that. But ultimately it's us for to decide and it doesn't mean that we are being disrespectful or being belligerent or abusing our power to not vote the way you wanted us to vote to a particular person. That's not how reality works. That's not how governments work. We are making a decision as a body. We have taken a series of votes throughout this process and that's where we are today. Now we're again at a point where the two candidates that we have at one time or another voted to offer the position to, we've also now not offering those positions to those people. And we're now at a point now where we need to make another decision about how to proceed. And I just think that people have need to understand that and show us the respect that we are doing the best we can. I will also say we have made some human mistakes. I've made some human mistakes as we've tried to move through this process and go quickly to get everything to work. Mistakes happen. So that's part of what's gotten us to this place. We thought we were making a really good decision. Um, when that vote happened to rescind the offer to Dr. Perron, at the moment, that seemed like the best decision. It seemed like the reason to be looking out for the most number of people in our community so that they wouldn't have to have a similar experience that we had. And again, you may not like our decision there. You may not agree with our decision, but that's why we are elected officials and that's our decision to make. So please run in, in September and November and look to be the next school committee member in our community and then you out there will be able to make that decision in the future. But in the meantime, we're here trying to do the best we can with the information that we have and work as a body to make the best decisions we have. The last piece I want to say is that in terms of how our decisions have gone down, they've been very close-cut decisions. Many of the pieces of whether we, when we first offered it to Dr. Perron or the other ones since then have often been three to four decisions. They've been close. We've been on like working things out together. And so people are going to have different opinions. And so what you hear in the media is going to come across differently because they're going to have different opinions about why they voted certain ways or what they heard or how they took in information. That doesn't mean we're biased. It doesn't mean that we're, you know, again, belligerent or power hungry. It means we're trying to do the best we can. Um, and I also just want to speak out very much in support of our students. I think that everyone is willing to, anybody who's willing to put themselves out there and raise concerns is really important. And I for one definitely support any student in our district, but definitely our transgender students who are feeling any additional pressure or, or a student who's not transgender, but an ally and raise that question. We are all allowed to have our voice and be able to raise that voice. Nobody should be attacked the way that they have been in social media in this community or outside of our community, but using our social forums in this community. So I really hope that that ends. I really hope that we can go forward and understand that we're all humans trying to do the best we can in this community and make the, the best decisions we can. The last thing that I'm going to say then is that in terms of this decision going forward, I do think that we should be looking at, and I don't know the details, so I'd like for you to clarify some more details, about what that would look like. How do we look at interim superintendents? How does that process work? How quickly can it work? Give us a little bit more details about what that choice would look at, um, what I would appreciate as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Um, before I call on the mayor who raised her hand, um, a couple of things. So, um, some participate, participants raised their hands. Once public speak closes, we can't, we can't call on people. We're now into our regular part of our meeting, so we won't be calling on anybody, um, who's just listening. Um, in terms of going to, um, get an interim, MASC has a list of people who are interested and just have their names out there, um, as being interims. And often it's a retired, um, superintendent or someone who is just about to retire. And so we would contact them right away and start to pull together a list and then make a decision from that. And my thinking is that we would have to do it pretty quickly. So I would be urging all of us to, um, you know, have the meetings, figure it out and get this done. Um, right now we only have four, uh, four meetings left. And I'd like to have us to have a decision made if we, if we go with the interim. I'd rather have that decision made, um, at least by our last meeting, which is I think June 13th. So. Uh, Mayor, you raised your hand.
Um, I actually didn't take it down from the first, um,
Okay.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Megan, Ben, anybody? Shannon?
Cindy, can you just clarify? How quickly can we get those kind of, that additional information together? It's not just us putting meetings together or what we're putting information together from other people. So what have you heard in terms of that process would look like?
I've heard just that I, and I, I've only begun to explore this. I've heard that they have a list and that we would call and they would, um, submit to us their list. So. How quickly? I don't know. I mean, if we decide to go that route tonight, then I would be calling tomorrow. And I would be asking them to put this on the express train. So. Shannon, you unmuted?
I did. I just wanted to ask if there was an opportunity to possibly go forward and talk to Dr. Perron since we didn't do it initially.
Are you suggesting that we make a motion to return to negotiations with Dr. Perron?
I'm not suggesting anything. It's just a question.
Okay, um, my understanding, unless something changes tonight, my understanding is we voted twice. Uh, once in executive session and once in open meeting. And, um, so my understanding is that it's time now to look at other steps.
Just to clarify, but, um, anyone on the committee can make a motion. Okay, I'm just, I'm just clarifying process. So we're going with, um, typical procedure of, uh, someone making a motion, someone seconding the, and then a vote.
If someone was to make a motion and the vote went to, um, to re-enter negotiations, then that would be different. But right now we voted twice. And, um, we'll see. Lori?
Then for the record, I would like to make a motion. I have a feeling I know where the vote will go. But I just want to state once again that I truly feel that the only way we can work towards healing this community and showing what a true teachable moment is and showing students that we can sit together and learn from our mistakes together and work towards a good solution which will heal. I would like to make a motion to enter into negotiations with Dr. Vito Perron.
I'd like to second that, please.
All right. All right. Any discussion? Okay.
I'd like, oh, I'd like to just say in discussion, I really would like to remind all of us that we never negotiated. We had a phone call when we were exhausted after midnight. We had police going to someone's home. We had different perceptions that we saw differently as a committee, but we deliberated for more than two hours. We had a rigorous process. We had visits. We had statements by people. I know, Maren, I respect that people can change their opinion. And, but I think that to change your opinion, you really need valid reasons to do so. And I'm, I'm just saying we never negotiated certain points that he was requesting. So that's what I am most troubled by. The fact that we had an executive session to enter negotiations and we never did that. And I think it should be brought up that it was suggested to the Attorney General that we have a violation of open meeting laws. And I think Chair Krasinski, you got notification of that and you're supposed to bring that up to the public.
So we are working on our response to that, okay? And number, number one, I just want to, you're now talking again about executive session and what your perception of what happened. We're going to be looking at meeting notes tonight. We are going to look to approve our minutes. That is when information comes out.
Well, Chair, I'm sorry because it's, it's probably, well, if I get something from somebody saying, has this been discussed? I didn't know that it was supposed to be in an executive session. It's also similar to hearing in the press that our, it was our students that had written a letter to Mayor LaChapelle. She got that letter on a Monday. She said that she passed that letter to you on Tuesday. You then got in touch with Dr. Faginsky Stark on Thursday. And we still, as a committee, knew nothing about that letter. And then you responded to the Gazette, why didn't I call you? Why would I call you if I didn't know there was a letter? I didn't know how brave and valiant our students were to stand up to such a transphobia on social media. So I'm just perplexed by all of this and I'm always being questioned about executive session. That letter was not executive session and the mayor responded to the press that she passes those letters either to the chair of the city council or if it's to the school committee, to the school committee. And then you are supposed to share it with us. That is what the mayor told the press. So I'm really concerned about that. But I'm also concerned that there was a microaggression reported to city council in February, and I also never found out about that by a student who said that students were feeling that they had microaggressions because they were BIPOC and their hair was different. How come we never got notification of that either? So I'm always being told that I'm not following the process, but I really wish we would follow process. And I do want to get back to the vote.
Lori, I want to explain this something you're again talking about things that are not quite correct. The complaint to, uh, about the microaggression was not to us. We did not receive any information on that. It was to city council. So that is not something that we had the information on or could hand over to everybody. Okay? Number two, the letter that the mayor received, I don't know what day the mayor received it, but we acted very quickly. And once the candidate withdrew, I know that the mayor told the students that she had addressed the issue, that she and I had addressed the issue. And that should have at no point then do we go and share that letter. If the student shared that letter, that is their choice.
That is not, but the school committee has a right to know. Just as President Omar Gomez of the city council said after that student went, he sat down with you and the superintendent, Dr. Leclerc, to discuss it. And I feel that that should have been brought to our attention because those are true microaggressions, not lady, and we never heard about it. So I have a lot of concerns. The more I learn, I am going to question this process because our constituents have asked that I continue to do so because they deserve transparency.
And my answer to you is we've done absolutely everything that we're supposed to do legally. We have checked every single step with legal advice so that we protect not only your interest in knowing, but people's rights. And we have done what we were supposed to. And I think we need to move on. I think we need to go.
No, no, no. If students had a complaint about a microaggression and felt they couldn't come to their school committee and they went to the city council instead, you know what? They were right because if they went and then they had a discussion with the superintendent and the chair and you still didn't let us know, maybe they went to the right place. Why didn't you let us know that?
Mayor. You're using.
I, while I hear Member Garcia's concern and around process, I would say, one, it is her valued opinion of the events. And also, Madam Chair, I would say she is out of order for the question on the table. Expressing her frustration with, with process. I appreciate her response to constituents. That, that's her opinion and that's her choice. But I would ask that the meeting or turns back towards the question on the table.
Thank you. I agree. Okay, any more discussion? There was a motion to re-enter negotiations with Dr. Peron. It was seconded. Is there any more discussion? I am not seeing any. Okay. Mayor? Hold on, me?
Cindy.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry, Megan. I didn't see your hand. Thank you.
I think it's important as my colleagues have addressed and as we have been asked by the public to be transparent and to respond and, and be open. And so rather, first of all, I'm, I'm anxious about speaking. I, it's been a very difficult 25 days. What I want to say is what I said last meeting. There's a motion on the table to re-enter negotiations. I voted no for Dr. Peron. I did not think he was the best candidate on the initial night. I voted no in the second public vote. I voted no. I voted no in those, in the public votes. I have seen nothing in this time period that indicates anything that, that would change my mind. And I just want to make sure that that is on the record for constituents to hear. I have heard all sorts of rumors from every direction about an agenda or some evil plan or some plan in general. If that were true, then I would be the very worst person in the very, in the whole world at making an agenda. Because I have suffered greatly from this. So I hope that you will hear me say on the record, there is no agenda. I voted no for this particular candidate. I voted no again for this candidate and I will vote no again tonight.
Ben, did you want to say anything before we vote?
Uh, I, I, like I, I feel maybe echoing some things that have been said, but I'm, I'm like pretty like beaten down in a way, but that doesn't matter. I, I, I guess I'm just feeling a little bit like, I've lost touch with what is sayable and not sayable. I've, I've lost the thread between, like I, I've tried extremely hard for this whole period of time to honor the constraints of this position and to honor open meeting law. Like to the public, I would want you to know that it has driven me out of my mind not being able to just tell you what, it, what my thoughts and experiences were. And like the, the constant sense that like we have done something terrible is very difficult to live with. So that's it. I, 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 I have had no agenda, no scheme, no plan, no desire to hurt anybody. It's just been like a kind of non-stop struggle. So I laid out in the last meeting what my issues were with, with Dr. Peron's candidacy. And similar to what Megan said, I don't have a, a new idea. So I'm, I'm still voting no.
I, I would, we haven't taken the official vote, but I would agree that there, in my opinion, there hasn't been any change. So unless we have further discussion, I would say let's just go for our vote and see where we stand.
I just want to throw one last thing in here too. I just think that it's really important. Again, I mean, I said this a little before, the mayor said this as well, you said this as well, that we all come down and have different opinions. And the public, whether it's the union, whether it's individual teachers, administrative students, community members, parents, we all have our opinion about how this, how they would vote or how people, we will vote individually in this moment. Just because we don't decide any one of us or as a body to vote the way you want us to vote, first off, doesn't mean that we're not open to growth mindset or willing to look without, that we're not looking at what's best for this district. We are working for the best of the district. We are taking all the information that we've had, both on that initial night as well as now additional new information that's developed over the last 25 days, as Megan said. And how people have come out and how people have not spoken up in certain ways. And that's ultimately just more information to inform this vote. So I just ask that everybody, we don't need to yell at each other. We don't need to demand respect of each other. We don't need to have all levels of community, social media like rudeness about this. Ultimately, it's the group of us that are going to make this vote and that's why we're elected. And that's why we're empowered to make this vote. It's been a very thorough process and we're now trying to do the best we can to move forward. So we're going to end up with, everyone's going to have different opinions about this. But we are the seven people that are going to make that final decision on this vote and any other future votes.
Okay, anymore? All right, Mayor.
No.
Okay. Megan?
Megan Harvey, no.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, no.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, yes.
Okay. Marin?
Marin Goldstein, no.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, yes.
And Cindy Krasinski, no. Okay, the motion does not pass. All right, let's go on to figuring out Dr. Bruno or an interim. We were starting a conversation. We got a little sidetracked. We got into a little, Marin?
I think that through our process, when we were discussing on that first night, the three candidates, we felt very clearly that Dr. Bruno, while a good person and clearly had a big heart for the work of working with students and working with districts, that at the time, we did not feel that he was ready for the right candidate to work for our district. And I think that based on this process that we've gone through and what we need is someone who can step in and be an experienced superintendent that can offer us that experience to get us through the year and be able to allow us to go through the process again and be able to look at all of the candidates who apply for this district next year. And that's then where we'll find our long-term candidate. So I think that's really the best route for us to go at this point. I don't know all the details of what that's going to look like. It sounds like we need, going to need to reach out to MASC and see what kind of list they have and see what, how many people are on that list and how we vet those people or how we make that decision. So I think we need to have additional meetings as quickly as we can on the books to be able to do that. And whether that's, you know, however that process is to be as clear and transparent with the community, but that's where I think we should head.
Any other weigh in on interim or Dr. Bruno? Megan?
Um, I attempted to approach and figure those would be our two options going forward tonight. So I did my due diligence this morning and I went back to our folder. I went back to the application. I reread every single piece of paper in the application submitted by Dr. Bruno. I read the comments and discussion that we had as a group and my notes from the interview, all of it, the, the notes from the site visit from my colleagues. And I, I appreciate what the mayor said earlier that it's, it's not an, an easy decision. I'm of a split mind. I see pros and cons both directions. I have thought obsessively about this and I think this is one of those situations where there is not a single right answer. There is the answer that we choose and we will do the best that we can. I know I'm doing the best that I can. There were so many positive things in that file, in his interview from his references that we all said that night. There was a lot of really positive comments there. There was also a clear, as Marin pointed out, a clear statement from most committee members that it was not as much experience as we were hoping to have at this point. We were, I think, one of the committee members had something like, I, I hope he applies again in five years if we have an opening. That seems like he'll be a great fit at that point. I really respect his continued interest in the way he has reached out. We have heard more openly from that particular candidate from, than any of the other candidates who have, who have not been in touch with us. I'm not, I, I realize I have not said anything concrete yet. I just want you to know that I, I went this morning. I, I sat outside of the offices and I went through every single piece of paper and agonized once again. And the two things I think I want to say are, and we all noted this in our discussion, his answers about special education were phenomenal. We recognized that the community, we've got feedback from the community about that. He addressed our questions about tech curriculum and tech and language curriculum and STEAM. He addressed our questions about anti-racist curriculum. He asked us good questions at the end of his interview. But I, I think, you know, I, I think I looked back at his, his application materials and his experience and the number of years in each position and all that. And I, I think there is something as my colleague Marin pointed out that, you know, we, we made a comment, we made statements. We can, we are certainly allowed to change our opinion and our thought. But, but we noted some stark differences in experience level. And those are the two sort of pieces that I'm pulling forward as I make this decision. I'm, I'm absolutely not entering this meeting with a made up mind. I'm interested in this discussion. I just wanted to bring up those points from, from his application interview.
Thank you. I agree. It's a, it's a tough one, Ben.
I, I've been thinking about this from just the perspective of this process. And it, it, it doesn't, like obviously, like I've said this in prior meetings and it sort of Marin and, and Megan said similar things about his experience was an issue for, for me during the interview and at the site visit and all that. It was, he's a, he's a really strong candidate down the road, I think. Uh, I, I think that in terms of like, like, I don't know if it's like optically or perception wise, like I really think it's time to like put this particular search away and start fresh down, you know, next year, get an interim in the meantime and and hopefully begin the process of healing. I, I, I think that our community does need to hopefully put this away and find, find a way forward. And I think that someone, hopefully someone could come, come in and, and set, set up, set up shop for a little while and help us get started on a new era and, and East Hampton. That's about it. I think, I, I think that's where I'm going. That's the direction that I would like to go at this point.
Um, Shannon or Lori?
I'm just listening at this point.
Okay, Shannon?
Oh, my, and I'm sorry. I, I had to turn my camera off. I had to stand.
Okay.
I'm having trouble sitting.
Okay. All right. Um, so I mean, I, from my perspective, I, I, I'm split. Same thing. I know that a lot of the committee felt that he did not have as much strength of experience. My part of me says that if, I think he'd respond to a mentorship program. And I think that we have a really And I think that we have a really strong administrative team. So I think that's um, a role he could grow into pretty quickly. That being said, um, there is a lot to be said about having an interim who has already been a superintendent to can um, pick up the, these pieces pretty quickly. Um, we kind of has been, have been on a hiatus right now and um, it would be nice to get back to, um. I don't know, some sense of normalcy. Now, again though, we don't know exactly who we would get and how quickly we could get a value, valuable con- uh, candidate. That concerns me a little bit, but I have seen it in the past where you have um, had a position open up and then interim's been pretty um, pretty quick to um, come forth. Uh, we've had two at my district to fill in different gaps and it worked well. Um, and again, it was a superintendent who already, you know, knows the system. So there's not that growth period. So there's an unknown. Um, I do believe Dr. Bruno would be a great superintendent. So if the committee went for Dr. Bruno, I would be happy to go with Dr. Bruno. The committee goes for an interim. I would be happy to go for an intro. I think that it, again, the, the idea is so close. There's so many pros and cons. Who knows? So Marin, are you going to make a motion?
No, I would actually suggest that we hold off from making a motion either for Dr. Bruno um, or otherwise, I think that what I would prefer at this moment is for whoever needs to be assigned, if it's you or somebody else to assign to reach out to M A S C to get that list, to get more information on the process, to get all those pieces. Then we can review that and we could still at that time say, based on now all these details and the five potential interim, you know, people that we see here, this is the information we have, then we could maybe decide given this information, okay, maybe Dr. Bruno is the right choice for our, to come in as a district. I don't know that right now because I don't have enough information. So my preference is we do our due diligence, we get all that information in front of us. Then we can make a decision about how to proceed, whether it's Dr. Bruno or, you know, for an interim position for a three-year contract or a interim person for one year. I would like more information before we make any further decision.
I, I like that idea. Um, we have about two weeks till our next meeting, two or three weeks. So I think that either we could have a, a earlier meeting scheduled if we got earlier answers. Or just at our next meeting, be able to talk about those steps. I certainly think that gives us more information as to how easy it is, what the candidate pool is, how quickly we could fill that. Um, and then again, it might be time to look back at Dr. Bruno and say, okay, now I'm feeling that that's the right choice. So I'm totally comfortable with doing that. Um. If that's a motion and it's seconded and approved, is there any other discussion about Marin's idea, Mayor?
Um, I'm certainly, I'm in support of Marin's um, suggestion uh, time-wise and um, I know it's the, at the, the chair's discretion. Um. Is there a school committee subcommittee that we can refer to to have conversation about the process if it comes early? Um, rather, and then bring it back to full school committee or is that, and I, I say, I, I just don't know how the committees. I mean, I, I know what the communities do, but I don't know how they function and, and that would be admirable.
So my suggestion would be that the first thing we would do is I would make a call tomorrow to M A S C and see what the process is and how quickly. And then perhaps we have a working session to um, share that information and decide how we're going to go forward um, in terms of um interviews or whatever. So is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the right line and we, we have several, I mean, next Tuesday is kind of booked for, for a couple of different committee meetings that we have, but um, Monday evening might be a dime that would be, be able to get an agenda in to be able to have a working session so that we could have all that brought to the committee members to be able to review and be able to keep moving this forward. Um, and then we do, our next committee is in two weeks. So if we had a working session next Monday, we would be able to, you know, figure all those details out and then come back and make you know, whatever next process we could. We already have a meeting for the fall for two weeks, for another week after that. So um, I, I wouldn't want to wait two weeks, but I think that if we added that working group, we could keep moving forward as quickly as possible and be able to bring back to the community a full understanding of what we're, of the pro- this sort of next stage in the process at our next school committee meeting.
Yeah. Any other discussion before somebody makes a motion? You can make a motion and then we can discuss. Does anybody want to make a motion? Perhaps Marin, since it was his idea.
If there's no other discussion, then I would like to make a motion that we seek out additional information about the potential interim superintendents through M A S C. Uh, and that we then follow up as a working group session um, potentially next Monday to be able to review that information and process and begin moving that in that direction.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So that was Megan. Okay. Um, all right, any more discussion before we vote?
I think, I just, I'm just curious if uh, like okay, in the interest of getting this done, like I, is there a chance based on what we already know about Bruno that we would, we would find that Bruno is the best option? Like I, I mean, I suppose that's possible, but I, I guess I'm just wondering why. I, I think this is smart to get the information, but I'm just, but I'm just thinking like thinking out loud here about like whether or not we could just, whether or not doing it tonight is better. I'm just could I, I would love to hear more about that.
I think, I think Marin's idea, um, what I like about it is right now, we don't have a lot of information about time. We don't have a lot of information about how quickly we can get that process going and what the candidate pool is out there. So I like the idea of finding that information out and bringing it to the committee so that um, we're, we're more informed as we go forward, as we make the decision whether to do an interim or, or a Dr. Bruno. Does that make sense? I like that. I, I think information is really important and right now, this is a very unusual circumstance. Um, so we don't have those answers. I wish I did. Um, I'll call tomorrow if that's what we want. Megan?
Actually, uh, think Ben brings up a really good point here. Um. I'm not sure quite how to phrase this, but I'm, I'm thinking, I, I think maybe this is what Ben was getting at. What would it, it take for us to see a candidate or a group of candidates for the interim that would sway our vote over to Bruno and is that criteria fair to the community and to the process? Um, or is it what, what we're not going to do, and I don't want to give the impression that we would do, is we're going to scrap around and just fill in a gap and, and not do our due diligence here. Um. If Dr. Bruno is a good candidate and we want to move forward with him, I, I actually do really see Ben's point of that we should say that we want to move forward with him and do that and not look to see, well, is there some better out there? You, you know, it's sort of, I don't know.
What I'm not sure Ben was saying, um.
What did you?
I'm not sure right now that Ben was saying that that's what you were thinking is that Dr. Bruno at this moment tonight is the best candidate. Is that correct?
All right, say that again, Cindy. What did you?
I'm trying to understand what Megan was saying. I didn't hear from you that you thought that tonight you had enough information to decide that Dr. Bruno was the best candidate.
No, I wasn't saying that. I was thinking more just uh, whether or not we could make a decision tonight. Um, because no matter what kind of information we get, is there anything that would, I, I, I guess I'm just in theory thinking this through like.
Oh, are you thinking that if you get candidates and you know a timeline, you might then say, oh, I've seen those candidates and I'm feeling like it's Dr. Bruno or on, on what grounds would we, I don't think we can answer that question till we look at this information.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's unusual and we just don't have those answers.
Yeah, maybe I'm just.
And I think we could have a working session and that if need be, we can quickly um, schedule another meeting to make a public meeting and discuss this to make that decision pretty quickly. If that's helpful. Rather than wait for the next regular school committee meeting, I'm comfortable with us. I make a phone call, we have a work session, we figure out what, what we're going to do and then we have a public meeting to decide that. Does that feel better?
Yeah, I think it has to be quick. I want to, I want, I think I'm eager to move forward. Um, so I'm just.
I am too.
I'm looking for something, the next, the next phase to start.
Right, I am too. Okay.
I think the piece that I would throw out there just real quickly, I'm sorry, just to say is that, um, I I want to get more information and that, that's where I think, and I think that part of what, you know, any mistakes that we've made through this process was when we were moving too quickly to just try to felt like the process needed to do this next thing. And that's where I felt like we made mistakes. So taking a moment while it would be best and you know, ultimately we all need a decision of who's going to be our inter- you know, who's going to be our next superintendent, whether it's interim or three-year contract or not. It, it's, I want us to, I want to slow down enough to be able to have as much information as possible and make the best decision as possible, not just feel like we've got to do something tonight or now because that's what the process demands us to do.
I'm, I'm with you because I think slowness is something that was missing through this entire thing. Um, and we can bring some slowness now that might, that might be okay, but, but at the same time, I do hope that we can make the decision like next week if possible.
Um, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I, I um, I, I do like the idea, I, I of uh, Marin's suggestion and, and getting more information and slowing down. Um, I out of respect for Dr. Bruno, I, I think he makes his own choice if he wants to continue on or not. As I think about this more, an interim is an interim with different qualities than what we would look at a long-term superintendent and I wouldn't, you know, you know, want to, um, have the Dr. Bruno think like, oh, we looked around for an interim and nothing, you know, I, 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 I think the process as far as our candidates. Um. I would suggest a vote um, on Dr. Bruno or some kind of motion um, around, we're going to go forward with an interim search rather than leave those options on the table. Um, both of them, i- if that makes sense. I mean, the.
Well, just a few minutes ago, I thought you were agreeing with Marin's idea that we needed more information to be able to make that. I do agree that there are going to be different perspectives. Um, in looking for an interim versus looking for um, a superintendent. Um, so I'm confused how we change that.
You should be. Um. Uh, yeah, that, that's, you know, um.
Well, I, so what I hear is the question, right, is that like, right now, potentially, we have the option to be able to say, we want to offer Dr. Bruno a three-year you know, contract. And there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of what people are saying about whether or not we feel comfortable with that. And so what it, what I hear the mayor saying is what we could then do is say, we are choosing to seek an interim superintendent for next year. So we are looking at this point to out of this process, probably end up with a one-year contract offer. And that could be to Dr. Bruno or it could be to somebody else that comes back on this list. And then through that year, you know, there's many options. It may be that we go into process, we maybe make a decision to offer that interim of three-year contract coming out of that and that could be to Dr. Bruno if we had chosen him as the interim or not. Right? So maybe part of this vote would be to decide, at least for now, that we're going to restrict next year's, the superintendent's search to next year being an interim, no matter what we or who we end up deciding it to be. And offering them a one-year contract.
The in- interim? No, you're, Mar- so you're saying interim? And, and then with the idea that we would negotiate um, a contract after going through a new search or no?
Well, I think that's, that's the future. So I, so I would say that that's the unknown about the future is that right now, if we can, just for clarity for everybody, I, I hear there being a desire to offer Dr. Bruno some clarity, right? So if we say we're taking off the play, off this plate for this committee, a three-year contract superintendent, that's our future superintendent. Instead, what we're doing forward is we're gathering more information to end up with the best decision process and then ultimately the person that we hire for a one-year contract to work with our students, school committee. And then the next steps that come out of that, I, I don't even know. I don't know if we have to, if we could then end up six months now deciding, no, this person is perfect and we want to just offer them the next three-year contract or do we have to do a superintendent search out of that? I don't know. So that's, that's, but that would be something separated into the future.
Right.
What I hear is the clarity, should we just say tonight going forward that we're looking at coming out of the further, the next stage in this process that we're only going to consider a one-year interim position? And so then Dr. Bruno knows for his own sake and his own decision-making process, does he want to still keep himself as a candidate for that position? Or are we, you know, that way we give, I, what I'm hearing is that's giving him respect and clarity about where we're headed. But I don't know what other people think about it.
So the answer to your question is it, it is possible that you hire an interim. And that, that interim um, feels like the right fit and the school committee then offers to make that a permanent position, a contract position. Um, again, I've seen it happen in my district. That um, there was just a very positive outcome um, with a particular interim and the school committee right during the year without doing a search, made that decision that they'd like to um, go into negotiations. That again, is totally possible. So I think all of these ideas, and I hope the community who's listening understands that we're going back and forth with how to do this correctly. We don't as a committee make rash decisions. We take the steps that are necessary. And we're really thinking about this. This is not an easy decision. So, um, any more discussion? It sounds like you're taking off the first, the first motion.
It's just, it was just questions. I don't know. I, I don't have to retract it yet unless people feel like that's it. If people are feeling that we absolutely just want to move forward with a one-year contract coming out of this, then I can retract it and restate my uh, proposal if they want. Or if we want to move forward where it's just more open-ended and we're just gathering more information and circling back and having a working session on Monday, then we can leave it that way. I don't know.
Mayor?
Um, I, I um, I mean, I would. Dr. Bruno went through our search process, which was rigorous. Um, when I look back at my notes, um, you know, there were comments about, well, he was a very, um, you know, his, his resume and the examples and the questions were very thorough. Um. You know, it was a question of. You know, it was a question of, is he ready? Um, so I kind of feel like. We've said he's not ready for our district, um. And what in a search for an interim would um make that different? It's, you know, he couldn't. Get, you know, five years of experience. Um, and I, I also, and I don't know if it, um. I have some concern about the candidate from a search. Being put on hold while we go into and and to see if there's an interim. Um. And and as far as like the interim becoming. Superintendent or whatnot, I mean, I know it's a year away. But one thing we all heard, regardless of the tone and words um or pictures. Uh, that were sent, um, the public and. Um, some of the colleagues are looking for another process. And and that's, you know, kind of where I, um. You know, if nothing else, maybe I would offer or or, you know, as. I would offer, um. A friendly amendment to what Maren had to say and just and and ta- and and say that we're going forward. To take out the part about Dr. Bruno and going forward with an interim search and still get information about the process. I mean, I think that that working session, you know. Is important. I know that that happens interims, but I don't, I don't know anything about the process of of how that actually happens.
So just to clarify, are you saying that we should then? Take a vote to potentially reject. The third candidate before we say we're gonna then move forward with an interim process?
Yes. I think we finish up our search and the results. Um, and be very clear for the candidate. Um. And, uh, then look at that, the option in front of us around an interim, um, and.
Okay, Russ is raising his hand, so I'm gonna ask that we let Russ talk.
Hi, everybody. Um, so I, in my opinion, you don't need to vote. In regard to the third candidate, um, you could simply have a vote. If you decide to do this, you would just have a vote that we'd like to pursue. Seeking an interim superintendent for a one year period. Um. That process, I can tell you what I've seen over the years. Normally what happens is MASC does have a list of retired superintendents typically. And. Those individuals oftentimes will agree to when your interim spots, um. So that's a pretty common thing and you would interview potentially two or three of them and decide. Who you feel is the best candidate. So it's not like a full blown search in any way really typically with interims. You're just looking for somebody that's gonna be able to. You know, maintain the district for a year while you decide what you're gonna do, you know, whether you're gonna go through a full search again later.
Thank you. So should I? Revise and refresh what my proposal was then?
Yes, so it sounds like Russ is just talking about going forward with an interim.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just telling what that process would be, but I don't, I was just kind of responding to the mayor's uh comment that. You don't really need technically to vote on the third candidate. That's just, you know. You normally vote on the candidate that you are seeking. If if there's no, there's a motion to vote on the third candidate, that's certainly fine. But I would have a motion not to proceed with the third candidate.
Right, right. We don't, you, it's usually in the affirmative, I hear you. Okay, so Maren?
So I would like to amend my proposal then that we move forward. Seeking an interim, one year contract, uh, with, for a superintendent. And that we begin that process with getting more information from MASC and finding what candidates are available for next year. On a quick but reasonable timeline.
We have a second?
I'll second it. We need to get to vote.
Okay, all right. So any more discussion? Otherwise, we're gonna vote. Mayor?
Um. Uh, yes, Mayor LaChavelle, yes.
Okay, Lori?
All right, Darcia Epstein.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, no.
Okay. And Cindy Krasinski, yes. Okay. All right. Motion passes. All right, so we made that decision. I will make that phone call tomorrow. And I will, um. Unless they tell me it's a longer process, but either way, I think we need to have a working session. And if Monday seems like that's an okay day, I think that that's where we go. We do that as quickly as possible. Um, because information will help. All right, so. We are on to the superintendent u- update. Sorry to keep you waiting. Excuse me?
Can I make a quick statement, Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, um. Say two things, one, um, that I'm appreciative, uh, again to our search committee who. Really did a good job identifying these three candidates. Um, I have, um, you know, regardless of the way this vote went tonight. I, I have respect for Dr. Bruno and I appreciate his willingness to reach out and step up for the, the position and. The last thing I wanted to say is that I also have been, um, being very careful to follow. All of the advice from uh regarding what we can and cannot say and who we can say things to. And so I wanted to make sure I had it said in this meeting that I also, um, am enormously proud. Of the uh students in our district who stand up for each other, um, who watch out for each other, who. Um, prioritize diversity, equity, inclusion, who call out um transphobia. Uh, and bias and racism when they see it, and this is not a single example of it. This is, our, our students have shown this over and over again. Um, and, um. Transphobic comments make a candidate not viable for this district. Had it not played out the way that it did play out, I would have. Acted in, in that congressional, what I'm saying here, that, that um makes her no longer qualified. And I thank the students, I commend their bravery and I hope that everybody, um, stop. Contacting the students, talking about the students, bringing their names up, whatever is happening, um. Thank you. We have your back. That's it.
Thank you. All right, uh. And I agree, so well said, Megan.
Actually, can I, can I quickly echo that, just to, I just want it to be known as well, some similar thoughts and feelings. I'm really grateful that um this was discovered and I'm, I'm a huge proponent of. Student autonomy and student advocacy and. Uh, it's a, a very exciting thing when students take it upon themselves to discover what really is important for, to them. Um, and so that, it's a great, uh, it's a great thing that that happened and I feel like I learned something. Really huge because I was an advocate for this candidate. And when I heard that this had come out, it was plain as day to me that it's time to move on. Um, uh, it was, someone mentioned in public speak about the GSA students, um. And if, if it's possible to attend meetings or if it's possible to somehow stand with you, stand with allies, I am. Completely ready to do so. It would be a great.
One of the draws.
Uh, um, so if, uh, I, I will, I would love to reach out and learn more about what you're up to and even when. When I'm not on this committee, I would also like to support your work, um, however I can, because this is an issue that is. Massive and needs to be much more visible. So thank you again to all the students and all the faculty, teachers and admin who supported them along the way. Huge work.
So just to add on that, um. GSA has come to school committee meetings in the past and one of the things we've got out of the habit of doing. Because life got a little bit crazy between budgets and COVID and everything else going on. Is that we haven't had, um, Dr. Leclerc can, can attest to this, we. Often had, um, different groups come and do a presentation. Because it is so valuable to hear from the students. So, um, one of the things that we talked about a few meetings back. Before we started the search is that we want to make sure that happens next year and that we plan ahead of time. Um, so the people have time to prepare. So, um, I missed those.
Can we please invite, uh, and do, make that happen, bring, bring student organizations, um, student reps. Students who are working together on in, in important projects to them, but also I would like to say that we should go there as well, like I. If, if, whatever configuration we can, um, to the high school, to the middle school, to the elementary school, like I want to visit with these people and, and. And support the work that's going on because.
All those, all those things are certainly possible and there are things that, that just with, with the. Chaos of COVID and everything else got derailed. So I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of doing that. Okay.
He's invited, it's an honor and a privilege. Truly.
Okay, Dr. Leclerc.
Thank you. Um, can I have the ability to share my screen? Thank you. And I have, um. I do have a presentation tonight, thank you. And I will try to be as quick as I can be. And let's see. Hold on, let me find it. I had it up. We've been on here so long, it disappeared. Here we go. Um, can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. I was asked to speak tonight, um, about, for a few minutes, just about our. ELL program because I know that folks, um. Received some correspondence about some changes that we're making to the ELL program for next year. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the why behind some of those changes. So, uh, and Julianne Levin is in our audience if we have any specific questions, um. Maybe she can join me, but I think I can get through most of this. So we have a group of students whose first language is not English. They are our English learners. They are EL students and we follow guidance from the Department of Education. Around serving these students appropriately. So we also follow the guidance from the Department of Education, which, um, asks us. To ensure that they are tested every year with something called the access test. To determine how they're progressing each year. When a student joins us as an ELL student. The average from, um, the average guidance from the Department of Ed is that they should. Move out of being categorized as an ELL student or an EL. After six years, they should be able to move out of. Needing additional support from our EL instructors. Now that has slowed down a little bit during COVID, as many other things have. But we follow that guidance as closely as possible. Now, when we service EL students, this is a chart that describes. How we are supposed to serve students. So just to go over very generally, for students. Who are really new to English, obviously they are going to require more support. And as they become more familiar with the language, they require less support every year. So we do follow that guidance. It's also assessed by their skill level on the access test. That's how we. Kind of figure out how to plug students in with the amount of services that they need. So I want to take you back to pre pandemic. When we had all the schools in the district, we had two ELL teachers that served thirty eight students. Across multiple schools. Um, in the second half of nineteen twenty, one of our ELL teachers went out on FMLA. So we were down to one teacher and of course COVID hit. And we immediately had an influx of COVID funds. So we said, let's immediately use funds. To get an ELL teacher because we knew we were heading in the direction of needing more support for our students. So we used ELL funds to, we, I'm sorry, we used ESER funds in the early days. To help students that were ELs get acclimated to remote learning. If you remember, we. We had a lot of challenges with getting technology in some of the homes, doing the hotspots. Getting, pushing out the laptops to students, so that's what we did early on. Now during COVID, we had during our first year of COVID, the twenty twenty one school year. We dropped down to thirty two students. But. We were fully remote that year. And students, particularly young students, were very much challenged. Our ELs were especially challenged. During that first full year of remote learning. So we used ESER funds again to hire two paraeducators. To assist the EL students in their regular classes during remote learning. To make sure that they were understanding what was happening in their regular classrooms, additional support in the classroom. During remote learning. The, these were funded during, uh, with ESER funds and they were never meant to be permanent. Positions. They were just added because our directive with the ESER funds was to shore up. Our biggest areas of need and we thought that our EL students. Were particularly challenged during the, uh, remote learning part of the pandemic. Um, during the twenty one, twenty two school year, if you recall, we were partially remote. We were partially in person towards the end. Of the twenty two school year, um, we had forty three students. So we elected to keep all five positions, the three teachers and the two paraeducators. Why? Because we noticed that access scores during remote learning. Were kind of flat. Students were not moving or not progressing because remote learning was difficult. So we thought it would benefit our EL students to keep the paraeducators on. We had the funding through continued ESER dollars. We had ESER one, ESER two and ESER three. So we thought that that was a good investment. It aligned with. The directions or the directives or the goals of the COVID dollars to help support struggling learners. And just stop me if you have questions. I know I'm going fast, because I know it's late. Um, this year. We had, uh, thirty nine students. So we were kind of, we're kind of back to pre pandemic levels. With our numbers. We've continued to keep that same level of staff because we knew we had. We still had money and we knew that we were moving into the new school. We knew transitions would be difficult. Getting acclimated to new staff, new routines, um, new building. You know, we thought that all those variables, it was important to keep the status quo. We looked at it as a transition year, kind of working out the kinks. So I just, I wanted to give you also data around the breakdown. So we had three teachers, three licensed teachers. In K through five, that teacher serviced, um, twenty three students this year. In grade six through eleven, the teacher serviced eleven students. In grade nine through twelve, that one teacher serviced eight students. To give you an idea, our average special ed, not average, but our special ed teacher. Um, for academics has an average caseload of about eighteen. So I thought that was an important data point for you to have. This is what we're looking at for next year. We anticipate that our numbers will be lower and I'll talk to you about why. Um, because primarily due to our. Because primarily due to our access testing. Tentatively, our numbers look like this, if all stays the same. We have, we're going to shift grade level continuing, configuration. Our K four teacher will service eighteen students, that will be one full-time person. Our five-eight um educator, EL teacher will service fifteen students. And our grade nine-twelve teacher will service nine students. We have an educator at the high school that is taking a one-year sabbatical. But we do have a teacher on staff currently that is licensed as an EL teacher at the high school, who will transition into this program part-time for the year while our teacher is on sabbatical. And the reason, now the numbers I just gave you are as if all things stay the same, but I want you to take a look at this uh, graph that I've attached here. This is a, this is a graph of last year's access testing. You can see that we had fourteen students, the majority of students were at level three. Why is that important? Because if they reach level four, which is a four-point-two, they no longer require EL services by an EL teacher. We anticipate, we don't have our access scores yet, but we should get them in the next month or so. We anticipate a large number of those fourteen students will come off of requiring services next year, which will decrease the numbers I just showed you on the last slide. You can see by this graph that those fourteen students um, averaged around three-point-four-three. So to think that they could achieve four-point-two in one year of growth is very realistic. Now, not all of them will, okay? But the number I showed you on the previous slide was if all things stayed the same. That is why we made the conservative decision this year not to continue uh, having a full-time teacher at the high school because that teacher's on sabbatical. So we don't feel the need to replace that person with a full-time person. We feel a part-time person will be fine for the students that we anticipate having next year nine. I don't think all nine will be in the, will actually arrive at the high school. Some of them have applied to Smith Vocational, they may choose to go there. Some of them will come off through the access testing, so we anticipate that number to be lower. Um, and we will shift the two paraeducators into um, academic roles in the um, Mountain View School. They will not lose, no one will lose their jobs. Um, they will be absorbed because of their seniority. Because it was never, the COVID dollars were never intended to fund someone forever. That was just to help support students getting through a struggling time. Now, I put this slide up here because I also want to point out for those that are not really familiar with um, our English language program for our, our English language learners, regular classroom teachers that have EL children in their classroom are now required and have been required for at least ten years to have a sheltered English immersion certificate. That means that they are required to go through a course so that they can serve EL students in their classroom. They don't have the same qualifications as an EL teacher, that's a different level of expertise. But every classroom teacher that has, has an EL student should be able to support an EL student in the classroom. And I didn't know if you knew that or not, so I wanted to share that with you. So the way that um, our programming should work is for an EL student, they should be getting service from a licensed EL teacher and they should also be getting sheltered content through their sheltered English immersion program in their classroom. And that should be occurring all the time at all levels. So I just wanted to share that information with you. I think I sent this, um, I shared this PowerPoint with you before the meeting, so you should have that. I also shared, um, the, the EL department had communicated with me and I think with many committee members. So I did respond to the, the group of EL teachers and I sent you a copy of that uh, response today. And I'm happy to answer any questions and if I don't know the answer, I'm sure Julianne can help out. Ben?
Um, super interesting to learn about this and uh, uh, it's something I'd love to dive deeper into. I was wondering, perhaps Cindy, if, if we could have um, department members from this, from this group, um, from these, from this group of teachers come to, come sit in with us and talk a little bit about what their experience is in this field. I think it'd be cool to hear from the teachers as well, just to get a little, you know, direct experience from them.
I think the challenge may be, Ben, that you may hear a different perspective from them. They're trying to maintain the number of staff that they currently have. And, you know, it has been um, our work in the school district to fund the positions that are needed for the district and to use data to make our decisions. And the numbers I showed you this evening demonstrate that we're, we're kind of back to pre-pandemic numbers. And we're still going to keep three staff. Um, not the two that we had pre-pandemic, but we're shifting the paraeducators and, and I, I don't want to speak for the EL team, but it was my impression from the correspondence that I received that they're, they would like to keep the paraeducator staff um, in the program, which we did not fund in our district budget.
I said.
I, I, I just want to interrupt questions really quickly and let the public and uh, everybody know. Shannon just texted me, um, she had a recent procedure and so she is tired from this meeting. And so she has left. So just so you know, uh, if you see that she's disappeared, it's not that she got kicked out or dropped out, she, she needed to leave. So I thank her for coming for as long as she did. All right, uh, any other questions?
I think Laurie has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Leclerc, for that presentation. I would like to stress that there has been concern about the understaffing of our ESL program for quite some time, pre-pandemic. And I know you were using ESER funding and I know that those funds dry up. But it's also just, it can be very optimistic to think that the students are going to reach that level. They really need a four-point-two to be able to go into other classes. And um, I am a certified ESL teacher as well as being certified in Spanish. And it really frightens me to think that we are cutting the program. Um, many of my colleagues say we really have to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. And if we are not going to do all we can to support our English language learners, we are not standing by that. And um, the ESL department doesn't agree with this whole presentation and they would like to meet with us. So I would like to meet with them and we also, um, received some letters from concerned students.
Thank you.
Megan?
Megan?
Um, I was just looking to see if I have the presentation. I, it's very possible in my inbox that I've missed it, so I'm not even gonna.
I'll share it with you.
Would you just remind me, so you gave numbers of the number of students and the number of positions and I noted down um, starting from twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. Can you remind us of nineteen twenty and twenty-twenty-one?
Yep. Let me just bring it up. What year did you want? I'm sorry.
I, I wrote down, I thought, did you give numbers for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
Yep.
Oh, so twenty twenty-one was thirty-two students. And how many positions? That was when we went up to five?
We had, no, we had two positions. Um, I'm sorry, we had, we had three educators, licensed educators, and we had two paraeducators for a total of five. During the twenty twenty-one school year, we hired the two paraeducators during that year when we were fully remote.
Okay. And the year before.
And they helped, their job was to help EL students in regular classrooms. So they were not providing EL instruction per se as a licensed teacher would, but they were supporting the classroom teachers and the students in remote learning.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. Do you have numbers from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty? I think you told us those and I just, I missed them.
You want the previous year?
It was the previous. Okay, so that was thirty-eight students.
Yes.
And ELL teachers, no para.
Correct. So that was pre-pandemic.
I don't know if I have another question about it. I guess I just have, I, I, I know, I hear what you are saying that if we have this department come in, we'll hear a different perspective. I think that's probably what we're looking for because we're getting this information. Um, and as we have said so many times and you know, we've advocated for we, as many services as we can provide for our students as they need, as will help them. I'm so glad that they will hopefully be a number of them that reach level four um, and above. But could they still use services at level four?
They are not eligible for services once they reach a four-point-two.
Not, why are, this is not eligible, is there?
No, they, they graduate out, that's the law.
Okay.
So the uh, the EL teacher, and Laurie can correct me, the responsibility of the EL teacher, once a student reaches four-point-two, is to periodically check in with the classroom teacher and see if the student is still continuing to be successful in the class or classes that they're in. But they're not, um, they're no longer eligible for classroom support. That's like they're, they're grad, they graduate at four-point-two.
They need to be monitored.
Yes, the monitors, yep. Um, and I, and I would say, you know, I think that it's important to hear different perspectives. But I also want to say to you that, you know, this is an issue and we need to consider all the different variables that we have going on in the district. When I said to you during the presentation, uh, the average caseload for a special education teacher um, is eighteen students. Now, there might be, you know, if, if the EL department comes to see you to share why they want to continue to have services at the level that they currently have services at, who's to say that the special ed department will not say, well, wait a minute, now we want our turn? Because we want our numbers to go down. You know, so I think that what we really try to do as a district is we really try to look at the data and let the data tell the picture of what our needs are. You know, I might have, and, and you might advocate, I can, I can look to Megan on this committee and say, uh, I can recall uh, last year when Megan, and I'm just picking on Megan for a second for this example, but Megan and others on this committee advocated, we want to keep class sizes down at this particular grade level. So who's to say that a classroom, a, a grade level, say third grade next year is going to have twenty-four students per grade, I'm just making that up. Who's to say that the third grade teachers are not going, going to want to come to you and say, well, we want to advocate for more classroom teachers, you know? So we're really trying to stick with what our, what our needs, what our data is demonstrating to us. Right now, the data that is in front of us is telling us a story about the EL department. Could that story change next year? It could change over the summer. Maybe those students won't all move out of access, maybe they all won't get to four-point-two. Maybe we'll have an influx of immigrants. The story could change, but we again are letting the data tell that story and we're using, we're allocating resources according to data, not according to um, keeping the status quo or doing something because it feels good to us. So I'm, I'm really trying to say that if you open that door for one department, you may have other departments that want to follow. And, and you will have to, you know, by rights, give everyone an opportunity. So I'm just saying that from an equity perspective, there are a lot of departments. There may be other groups that come forward that say, well, you know, we want more science, you know, or this or that. So I'm just saying that, you know, this is, we have data points to support why we made the budget decisions we made regarding this particular area. So that's all I would share with you. The, the decision is up to you.
Well, and if I can just add to that real quickly, I think it's also very important to, to reiterate what a school committee's role is, right? So the school committee's role is we set policy and we set a budget. The implementation of that budget is up to the superintendent. So again, we need to be really careful. I think it's very important for us to bring out student groups, to bring out special programs, to bring out teachers, you know, to bring out like all the different constituents that make up our district and utilize our meetings as an opportunity to give voice to and to showcase and to support and celebrate. That's definitely part of what we do in our meetings. But ultimately, it's not going to be us saying, oh, no, you need to put two more para, the, para, the, uh, sorry, I don't want to say paralegals, uh, para-professionals into ELL. That's not our, that's not part of what school committee does. So I just think it needs to be really clear as we're saying, we'd like to have more people come and give voice to what's going on or to share their perspective on different programs. That's all good and well, but I think we also have to ultimately keep in mind what our role is and what we do as a school committee.
And, and schools are really pretty good at changing as the numbers change. So you may plan that you're going to have a certain number of students and then, oh my goodness, it turns out you have so many more or so many less. And you, you change and shift around um, your staff based on those needs. So um, I agree with Maren, it is not, that's not our job to, to oversee that. That is the job of the administrators and the superintendent to look at that and decide where those needs are. Um, and they are based on numbers.
Well, and I would also share that um, I think the EL department crafted a, a, a very nice letter to all of you. And so they, they shared their perspective, their impression. And I returned uh, an, a letter to them that I'm hap, you know, I shared with all of you as well. So, you know, I think that they had an opportunity to share information with you in a format that you could look at and review at your leisure. I don't know if I got it first, Laurie or Megan?
I, I just wanted to add, I do believe it is in our purview to make sure that all of our students are getting the adequate services. And if it's presented to us in one way and there are teachers that are suggesting that students need more support and it has to do with the budget, but it, it has to do with us as school committee members to make sure that they are getting what they need. And that was what happened when people were complaining about class sizes and we did intercede there.
Megan? Um, you know me, I've made my reputation for going back to the data. So I got all that because I was looking at the ratio, which is what you had discussed. You said the ratio that's common is eighteen to one. And I think, given what my colleagues are saying and the purview of the school committee. I think what makes sense for the school committee, part of this is to say, what does the evidence say of what ratio, not just what's common, but what is the evidence-based ratio? Is it eighteen to one? Is it ten to one? Because the ratios we've had over the past five years are nineteen to one, ten to one, nine to one, eight to one, and potentially next year seventeen to one, although we're not quite sure. So we're back at that eighteen mark. If research and evidence says that eighteen is fine and, and outcomes are not going to improve with this uh, lower ratio, then I, I think that's the thing to focus on, which I think goes to your point, Dr. Leclerc, we're not going to just do it because of the sheer number of positions. But what is the ratio and are we maintaining that level of service for our students? So I guess the piece that I would want to hear is what ratio, I know what ratio is common, what ratio is best for students? And I don't know the answer to that. It's a genuine question.
Julianne is on the call and um, I don't know what format she would need to do to, to speak. I can tell you that um, I have been a ELL director in a previous district and our ratios were approximately twenty three to twenty five students per educator, which I think is high. But um, when we think of classroom teachers, we think, okay, they have students, numbers, classroom numbers in the low twenties. They differentiate instruction every day. Um, and you know, I think an argument could be made that there's more levels in far EL students. So I think a lower number is more desirable. But um, going back, what's, what's a perfect ratio for um, a special ed teacher? You know, working with a student caseload. We, I think that as a point, we try not to give a teacher a caseload um, that is higher than what a regular ed classroom teacher would have as a caseload. Um, ideally, we would like to be lower than that. But definitely, if we're looking at going higher than that, we're having some, some real questions raised. And I don't know if Julianne wants to say uh, anything, if she wants to shed any further light on it.
Andy, would you have to make her a panelist?
She said her hand is raised. Julianne Levin, Andy.
Uh, you're hosting, Cynthia.
Oh, you're hosting.
I don't even, I don't even see her.
Under participants? There's a panelist line and like an audience line or an audience group?
Let me try. No, I don't have that.
Can you give me host back? Let me see, I can do it.
Sure. How do I give you a host back? Let's see, just click on you and make you a co-host or make you the host?
Yep.
There you go. We'll make you the host. All right.
My options are missing.
Well, I think that I, I can definitely, I can have Julianne follow up with you to address that question if her answer is different from mine, Megan, or if um, you just want to hear from her because I have been kind of not an ELL director while I've been here in East Hampton. I, I've kind of let Julianne take that over. Uh, she says her answer is not different. She just texted me. So, uh, you know, it, it does vary, I will say, based on levels. And um, I will give you a different perspective. Um, we had one newcomer this year. I think, well, actually, I think we had two students that entered as newcomers. One we found really wasn't a newcomer, but we'll call it two, just to be on the safe side. Two newcomers, meaning that they really didn't have any English. So they would require the more substantial time with an EL teacher. Um, compared to the first year, I think of remote learning, when we added the third teacher, um, we had five newcomers. Uh, so we really, our numbers have kind of, um, if you look historically over the last few years, our numbers have not been staggeringly up or down. They've kind of maintained the same. Um, and you know, I don't think we have that many variables. Go ahead, Megan.
Just popped into my mind, um, is uh, what are you, what are you thinking uh, in this decision? As you consider that this is like, it's, it's post COVID, whatever that means. But we're, we have student, like, these are students who have lived through this experience. And we have indicated and seen research that these students might need more support for longer. Like, does it make sense, rather than essentially doubling or potentially doubling that ratio? Does it make sense to make a plan to walk, um, you know, out of the, the level of support of an eight to one ratio? Um, and for the record, I'm okay with having aspirational ratios. So if special ed has.
So, uh, one of the paraeducators has moved out of servicing EL students at the midway point of this year. They've already moved out and been put into a different role. So that's already occurred. So we're down to one paraeducator and three teachers. Um, and I would say that we anticipate having significant growth on the access. We kind of had a, a lull there um, during remote learning, but our students have been making progress on other data points that we use in the district, such as reading assessments, MCAS. And that's why we do assessments throughout the year. And we do multiple variable assessments to see how students are doing. So our, our ELs are making progress. Um, and I think we have reason to be optimistic that we'll have several students move out of, um, achieving level four point two this year. But if we don't, we will definitely look at our resources again.
Anything more? Are we ready to go on?
I can get Julie to speak if we need her to.
Oh, good. If she wants to.
All right, Julie, getting you on.
Julianne's going to say that I knew what I was talking about. There she is.
Hi, I, I feel terrible. This might be anticlimactic. I'm so sorry.
Tell us, tell us what you think.
No, I mean, thank you so much, Dr. Leclerc, for um, sharing the presentation. Um, I want to reiterate, uh, lower ratios are amazing. Yes, like, let's do more lower ratios of, of special education students to special education teachers, um, EL students to EL teachers. I'm, I'm all for all of that. Um, but the reality is, um, we don't have that luxury. And so we make a lot of um, decisions uh, around those allocations. And, and this is a tough one. And I appreciate all of the thought that the EL department has put into what they feel like they um, will be missing next year with this reduction. Um, and it's, it's hard to think back to pre-pandemic times. I mean, who wants to do that, right? And the EL department absolutely needed more staff in pre-pandemic times. There's, there's no one um, debating that question. And I think it's exciting that we're going to come out of the post pandemic with more EL staff than we had pre pandemic. And I'm excited that the COVID funding was able to give us um, those lower ratios during the pandemic. All of those things are true. Um, I'm grateful to be in collaboration with really smart people. So thank you all. Thank you to the EL department. Um, and yeah, the, the uh, outcome, I think, is if we have a different um, view of access scores when we get the, the, this year's scores, we can reallocate funding. That's, that's what we do. Um, and we'll be smart about it. And I really.
What I can, I'm, I'm sorry, Julianne, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, and I just really appreciate that the EL department is advocating for themselves and for their students and for their families. Um, and I hate that our job is to not be able to say yes to everything that they need.
Julianne, in case you did not um, know, is the coordinator for the EL uh, staff. So she works directly with them. And what I can say that might help put your mind at ease is that when we do get the access scores, similar to when Julianne comes and shares the MCAS scores with you, she could share the access scores with you, you know, in a few brief slides. We should have that, I believe, you know, in the next month, Julianne?
Yeah, it, it's actually obnoxious how delighted that would make me. So please invite me back to show those.
But that might, um, that data, that data point might be important to you.
Yep.
I think that's a great idea.
Hundred percent. Let's talk.
And we'll make, we'll make that happen and we'll have her bring you some graphs on that. And then we can, you know, you'll have time to consider if you want to, uh, if you have any other questions as a follow-up, we can address them.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you, Julianne.
Thank you all so much.
So Andy, you can make me host again if you want or whatever, but um, okay, so thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Thank you, Julianne. Uh, we will look forward to getting that information and seeing uh, how they, how they ended up testing out. It's time for matters for action. So Megan, let's do our motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I don't even know if he's still here. Um, I, I'd been just getting a couple of texts, wondering who um, Rusty Prayer was. And he's the school committee's legal counsel. So folks have been asking. They're fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Laurie?
I just want to remind people that the Walk Bike and Roll event is taking place next Thursday, May fourth. May the fourth be with us.
All right, thank you. All right, so Megan.
All right, uh, fairly reasonable list today. I move to approve the minutes of the one five twenty, sorry, one twenty five, twenty twenty three school committee work session.
Second that.
Okay. Um, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
And Harvey, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes. Excellent.
I move to approve the minutes of the three twenty, twenty twenty three school committee work session.
Second that.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor?
Uh, Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the three twenty one, twenty twenty three school committee meeting interview.
Second that.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
And Harvey, yes.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie?
I Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the three twenty two, twenty twenty three school committee meeting slash interview.
I second that. Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
Cindy Kuzensky, yes. Okay.
I move to approve the minutes of the three twenty three, twenty twenty three regular session, school committee meeting slash interview with a stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
I second that. Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
I move to approve the slash notes of the four, four, twenty twenty three Zoom meeting canceled.
And the second that. Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
I move to approve the budget transfer request from salaries to contracted services, thirty six thousand dollars.
I second that.
Looks like there might be a session.
Yep.
I was just going to explain what it is. Do you want me to explain? I know you're on a roll. Um, that was a transfer uh, from salaries for uh, what we had. Uh, we had some um, services that we needed for children that we originally thought would be paraeducators, which are on our payroll. But we needed to go more towards um, RBTs, which have a higher degree of training, and we needed to contract with the field center. So it was for students that had more significant needs.
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. I move to approve the school payroll dated four, six, twenty twenty three in the amount of five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollars and ninety cents.
I second that. Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes.
Last one, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated four, six, twenty twenty three in the amount of two hundred and ninety two thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars and seventy two cents.
I second that. Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan Harvey, yes.
Ben Hershey, yes.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
And Cindy Kuzensky, yes. Okay.
So um, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to MGL thirty A D twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting uh, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares and pursuant to MGL thirty A S twenty one A seven to comply with your act under the authority of any general or special law, approval of executive session minutes for the session held on March twenty third, twenty twenty three, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, and March thirtieth, twenty twenty three. So we're going to roll call into executive session. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Mayor? Mayor LaChapelle, yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben Hershey.
Laurie?
Okay, and Cindy Kuzensky, yes. All right, so when they ask that the public leave uh, the meeting, thank you for your attendance. And we will um, move into executive session when everybody is gone.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.